What's the seven o'clock, what's that?
That's the Monday one.
Yeah, don't look at that second one.
Okay, gotcha. Didn't even notice that. All right, having called the meeting to order, we, I don't see a pledge on here, but we should go ahead and do it.
You've got the wrong paper, Matt.
Yeah, I must have, sorry.
None of this is related to what we're doing tonight.
Man, Bob, you're supposed to be sitting next to me as a...
Well, I'm sorry, man.
Oh, this.
Would you like to...
Ah! No, 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 that's okay, you can stay where you are. But, you know, Bob, he is, he's the Vice Mayor, he's the second-hand man.
Gotta take care of my man.
You're not earning your pay.
That's right. Okay, sorry, folks, had the wrong thing in front of me. All right, Pledge of Allegiance, it's all rising, where's the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul, are you here? I have a, I have a public speaker card, is that new business interview? Okay, that's really under public comment, so we'll skip public comment because there isn't anybody here for public comment, but, no, states, that's all right, Paul, because it's not going to make any sense for you to say something after we do the interviews, so why don't you go ahead and say it now? John, can you concede the mic to Mr. Mangini?
Just a quick comment on the process. Word best is an adjective that doesn't describe. What are the criteria that will be used to select a new city council person? What qualities and values will be sought for as a substitute for the will of the people?
So I have a second.
Thank you, Paul. All right, that brings us to item 4A, which is new business, and John, you're up as our first candidate. Now, before we get going, I did want to just set up a few procedure things, if we can, just for the sake of the council. Can everybody hear me all right? I feel like my, I'm not projecting, or speaker's not on.
Your mic's on, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Put it closer.
Yeah, put it closer.
How's that?
Yeah, much better.
Much better, wow, I can hear an echo. Okay, all right. Just a couple of procedural things, so we can see on the schedule, we have about 15 minutes with each candidate. I think what we should do here is we'll, much like we did with the Planning Commission applicants, go through a round of questions from each council member, and then, after we've done that, if we've got a little time, what I'd like to do is ask the council to have questions for the candidates that are the same for each candidate, I think folks are generally aware of that kind of process, but each candidate is unique, and this is a little bit of a unique situation from what we normally do in terms of appointing things, people to commissions, this is a council position, and as Paul referenced, you know, we're looking at putting somebody on the council without, without an election, so what I'm driving at is that there might be some things about each one of these individuals that may, you may feel is a little bit unique, and you may have a unique question for them, and we'll get that in the second round if we have the time. Does that sound like a fair process to everybody?
Sure.
And then when we reach the end of the interviews, we'll have time for us to deliberate, all of which is an open process, so you're welcome to stay and watch that. All right, so, John, why don't you introduce yourself for the sake of the camera and everybody watching, most of us already know you, we've read your application, but hit some high points, if you would, and then we'll go from there.
Very briefly, my name is Joan Hoffman, I'm a 40-plus-year resident of San Carlos, and I am making application for the temporary empty slot on the council with no intention nor desire to continue on after that. So I will not apply for candidacy for a subsequent term. Why don't we, because you have the information, why don't we go ahead, if you've got questions based on what I said, or maybe things that you'd like some elaboration on?
Okay, very good. Who'd like to start? Anybody out of the gate right away?
Well, you're looking at me, so...
Okay, very good.
I guess I'll start. First of all, thank you for applying, John, we really appreciate it, it's good to see that there's people interested in serving the city. I guess the first question I would have is, it's no secret that we've had some fairly serious budget challenges in recent years, we thought we had temporarily overcome them, and now we have some new challenges, and I was wondering if you had some thoughts as to how you think we ought to proceed from here, given that we've lost $1,003,000 in RDA money, and we've got little room for error, I guess, in terms of our planning.
I guess that divides down into the very near term and then the future, and let me speak to the latter first. We are going to, I believe, have a very significant problem if something is not done now with the future obligations to employees, both past and present. This is not unique to San Carlos, it's not unique to San Mateo County, or even to the state of California. I'm speaking specifically of the budget for pensions and for health benefits after retirement. So this is something I think the council needs to address well before the emergency comes up, and that will be, or should be, an ongoing process long after 18 months from now. Regards the near term as a practical matter, the council simply needs to take into account the money you have available, there are lots of plans, Wheeler Plaza being just one of them, that we'll simply have to wait until funding is available. So for major considerations, capital expenditures, I think it's an imperative that we take a very careful look at what we have coming in and stay with that level of expenditures.
Thank you.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Hoffman, I'll echo Ron's comments, thanks for signing up here to go through this process. I'd be interested, sort of as a follow-on to your last question and answer with Mr. Collins, what ideas might you have, or what would you think about in terms of trying to increase the revenue base for the city?
One of the things is new sales tax. It seems likely, from what I read, that Best Buy may not be around for very much longer as a corporation, that may give an opportunity for another retailer to come in that would provide some more tax revenue. The idea of parking meters has been floated, I personally think that's an undesirable option, although it does bring in some money, I think it is a greater disadvantage than it is an advantage to the city. There is no magic wand to wave, no magic formula to follow in generating more revenue. The city revenue comes from taxes, property taxes, and that will escalate slowly as the market recovers, and primarily from business. I think the thing that we can work on best, or two-fold idea of, number one, maintaining and as we can, improving the city's services and infrastructure to make it a yet more attractive place to live, and that will increase property prices, and secondly, put a considerable effort against being proactive for attracting business to the city. I think all too often, the philosophy is that you, you wait until somebody contacts you, either a broker or a corporate entity, to ask about the possibilities. I think we should be going out, attending trade shows, that type of thing, more than is currently done, and be more proactive in seeking out businesses.
Thank you.
Bob?
John, nice to see you.
Thank you.
My question's a little off the path, but just sort of a, because there's no right answer or wrong answer or any answer, it's your personal opinion. If you could change one thing in San Carlos, or accomplish one thing when you're on the council for the next 18 months, what would that be?
Well, the one most important thing, I think, is to work in conjunction with the I believe that the long-term problem that I mentioned earlier, that of benefits and pensions, is one that we must find a solution to before it, before we face the major part of the problem. And I would suppose that that would be the one thing that I would say would be most important for the long-term health of the city. There are a lot of things to do in the short term, but for the long-term health of the city, I think that's terribly important.
Thanks, John, thank you.
So, John, my question is probably, probably answered it a little bit with Bob's question, but the thing that I was thinking about with this whole process is, the council, as you know, really struggled with what to do with the opening that we face on the council, and we, we ultimately came to a compromise with this process of appointment for 18 months, rather than go to the expense and hold an election, and by the time you have the election, you've got essentially one, one year left on, on a council seat. So we came up with this as a compromise, and that leads me to wonder, for you as a candidate, how you see your role on the council, should you be appointed, and how you would approach it.
Well, maybe I'm going to have to ask you for a little more definition, Matt.
That's fine.
The role on the coun, let me comment first, the role on the council, obviously, is one of five members, making, making decisions pretty much at the policy level, and sometimes at, at specific question level, but are you referring to something beyond that?
Yes, I suppose I am, because normally, to get on the council, you, you go to the voters and you'd have a platform, you've run a campaign before, and usually you come out with, you know, three or four points that you want to make to the, to the electorate that refer to goals that you would have if you were elected, and in this case, you don't have that opportunity, and the public doesn't have that opportunity. So I'm looking for your response to a situation where you don't have the, you don't have the chance to go talk to the voters this time and say, what, what would you expect of me, or, I'm bringing this to you as some ideas, elect me over these other people who have different ideas. So you're, you're coming on, you're in a position where you're acting as a council member, how would you appro, how do you approach that?
What I would say, I'm sure, will be echoed by, by each of the applicants here, because it is the most important and the issue that will, will, I think, consume the most time on the council, and that is the city finances. That would be, I would, I would fall, I think, on the conservative side, if, if you're talking about a scale in terms of expenditure and finance. I think that we have to live within the means that we have, if we can increase the size of the income, if we can generate ongoing and steady new sources or income streams, that's very highly desirable, but you're facing a financial problem that will not go away, may get significantly worse, and certainly is with us for years to come. It's not, it's not a one-year, a two-year, a three-year problem that will go away after that. All the predictions are that this is, has begun to turn, but is, the growth is going to be very slow for some time to come.
Okay, thank you. All right, if, do we have other questions that we want to ask John that might be unique to John?
Nope.
No, anyone? All right, John, do you have anything you want to say, just as a wrap-up?
No, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you, I think the questions have been, been good questions, I hope that I am the candidate you will select for this open position. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Just some papers here. Okay, our second candidate is Inga Teagle-Doherty. So Inga, what we're going to do is just each council member ask a question that they're asking all the candidates, and after we get through that, as you saw we do with John, if we have time, we'll give you an, we may each have some unique question for you, and then give you a chance to wrap up.
Sure.
Okay, very good. Do we want to go in the same order, or you want to change up a little bit? All right.
Ron.
Hi, Inga.
Hi, Ron, how are you?
I'm fine. I'm going to ask you the same question I asked John to begin with, we have some large budget challenges these days, and I'm wondering if you have some thoughts on how we might address these in the coming months?
Yeah, the budget continues to be a challenge, I think. I think one of the, when I look back to several years ago, when this different council faced similar issues, one of the things that we looked at was more financial prudency, which was not necessarily spending all of the money that was coming in, but making some tough choices, and I think that in the past, that worked because there was the opportunity for making those choices. Nowadays, I think a lot of those choices have been already made, the cuts have been already taken, the projects that could have been deferred have been deferred. So I think that really what, the best way to start to address that, and this council has been doing that, is actually looking at shared services and working with some of the other cities in the county to try to gain some efficiencies, especially at the management level, to try to help reduce the overhead. I think continued prudent negotiations with the labor unions, obviously, is, is part of that, some of the retiree benefits. It's, it's a very tough balance when you're looking at both the, the services that, especially our public safety groups provide to the city, and their retirement needs, I think, is, is paramount, but also, at the main, at the same time, maintaining level of service. So it's, it's a tough call, and I think every, I think the city is, is doing this, and I think the council is doing this correctly, in that if you work on a three-to-five-year strategic plan, you hope that there's money, but if there's not, at least you're continuing in the same direction, staff has good direction in terms of what they bring to council, and allows the council then to make educated and informed choices about how to spend the money that they do have.
Thank you.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, Inga, how are you?
Good, Mark, how are you?
Oh, not bad, thank you. Again, sort of following on Ron's, Ron's question, what would you do to increase the size of the kitty that we have to work with?
Well, that's a tough call, we could always go out and try to bring more big-box retailer car dealerships to San Carlos to try to raise the, the sales tax pull, I don't think that that's necessarily the right thing for San Carlos, because I think one of the things we need to be cautious of is maintaining our sort of small-town charm, but really focusing more on supporting the existing businesses that we do have here in town, trying to look at working with some of our commercial real estate, especially for some of the places over on the east side, there's a diamond in the rough, I think, over on our east side, with some of those properties that are over there, or even in the Harbor Industrial area, where those are certainly not developed to their full potential, I guess is what I would say, so perhaps looking at some way to ease some of the, the restrictions in terms of the building density, or, and/or mixed use over on our east side, I think, would be one way to do it, because the rest of the city is, is for the most part, pretty much built out, we could certainly look at bringing additional retail along the Al Camino corridor, but I think that's all part of really, much of a, much more of a bigger plan, but just short-term, or shorter-term, I guess, three to five years, really is looking at how to really more effectively maximize the space that is over on the east side.
Thank you.
Mr. Russili?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Inga.
Hi, Bob.
The question I had is, if you could change one thing, or you could accomplish one thing in the 18 months that you'll be on the council, what would that be?
I think what I would try very hard to do is build consensus amongst the four council members, and to help facilitate, really, some, some focus on a single, or a more, I guess, cohesive strategic direction. It's really, I think, 18 months is really, as most of you know, a drop in the bucket, there's really not that much time to actually accomplish anything, other than to do the best job that you possibly can, make informed decisions, keep the best interests of the community at heart at all times, but also be willing to stand up for what you think is right, and have to, or be able to try to influence and, and get a single body to get the, you know, the votes necessary to make some progress here in the, in San Carlos. So I think that's primarily it. It was interesting, I was out last night and ran into a couple of fellow, or council members from neighboring cities, and I think one of the biggest, one of the biggest roles of a council member, not that 18 months you can do this, is really to build those relationships with your neighboring cities as well, because that's really one of the directions where I think bodes well for, for streamlining some services and finding some efficiencies between this community and other nearby communities that face very similar issues. And unfortunately, with an 18-month limit, you may, whoever gets pointed into this role may or may not be successful in building some of those relationships, but it's really, I think this, for 18 months, it's really about relationship building, consensus building, getting, getting this council to really work towards a single direction.
Thank you.
So my question does relate to it being 18 months, and also that we came up with the solution of making an appointment for 18 months and asking the person not to run in the fall of 2013 as a... And we did that because, as I say, as a compromise, there were two of us that wanted to have an election, despite the fact that it cost $50,000, and despite the fact that it would end up being for about a year, and then the other, the other half of the council feeling like appointment's the best thing. So we came up with this compromise, it is limited to 18 months. So my question is, and you've, you've answered a little bit, but if you want to go into more detail, since you're going to have the time here, just how you see your role on the council for the 18-month duration, and how you would, how you would approach that, given the fact that, you know, it's, it's not something that you've been elected to, you haven't gone out there and competed in the world of ideas of a campaign, and there's not been the voice of the people, so there's just, there's the voice of us, of course, but how do you see that role playing out?
Well, I think it's actually probably twofold. The first role would be really working with current council, current staff, around understanding what the upcoming issues are, to try to come up to speed very quickly on what's on the horizon in terms of the next 18 months, understand the priorities, and then also start to work a lot more at getting out into the community and establishing more of a open communication with some of, as you, as you talked about, the registered voters or the residences and small businesses here in town. In terms of looking at it for just 18 months, one of the things I should bring up is, you know, and I've talked to each one of you individually, so you probably have come into this interview knowing that my intention was to run in 2013, and I really faced a tough decision about whether or not to continue with this interview or not, and for me, it's a, it's a very, I guess my question to this council would be, you know, in terms of the next 18 months, what's on the horizon in terms of needing to have a fifth vote to help, or either something as simple as a fifth vote, to be a tiebreaker, or to really a fifth colleague to help you come to and understand what the real issues are, and what some of the nuances of the issues are, I think that's the, the value of a five-member council is, is that everyone comes to it with a little bit different opinion and a different perspective, based on both their historical viewpoint, as well as what they would like to see accomplishing in the future. I probably would spend more time bringing my, more of a historical perspective to the council, I've been a long, long-time resident of San Carlos, have been very active in the community, and I've seen a lot of changes, I've helped participate and lead a lot of those changes, so I think if asked the question directly, which I assume that you would ask the question, but if not, I'll answer it, I don't know what I'm going to do in 2013, and so if you ask me today to commit to not running in 2013, I would very politely thank you for your time and suggest that you may look at another applicant. However, what I am certainly willing to do is not run as an incumbent, because I think that's probably one of the issues that both you, Matt, and, and Mark have felt has been, provides an unfair advantage to anyone, but I think that, and, and I'm perfectly willing to go out and run as a non-incumbent, I don't believe that, given what I could potentially bring to the council for a four-year term, I would have a hard time explaining that to the voters and, and getting elected in 2013. Now, having said that, I guess the, the, the issue I'm dealing with is, is do I look at a four-year term that I'm willing to run for, and I'm willing to get up and tell you what my, my platform is, and what I would like to do in a four-year term, which is enough time to actually accomplish something, as all of you know, and I know, but, or if the greater value to this community is for me to serve for 18 months and, and provide direction, or help provide some direction during that time. So I will leave that open-ended for this, for council members to, to think about as you're going through and considering my application for filling this vacancy.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Inga?
None for me, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just before you leave, Ms. Doherty, we didn't give Ms. Doherty an opportunity to introduce herself at the beginning before we went into the questions, and thought we might give you that opportunity now before you leave.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Closing comments, you have a few minutes here.
Closing comments, sure. Well, I mean, I've been a longtime San Carlos resident, 45-plus years, been here all my life, know a lot of people, live in the same house, same neighborhood that I grew up in, and so I really care very deeply about San Carlos. I also have a longstanding history of volunteering and being very active in the community, you know, I've started volunteering when I was 16-years-old, and never looked back and never stopped, because I think it's, for me, it is something that I really care very deeply about, and I'm very passionate about doing, and it provides a lot of purpose for me in my life. So having said that, I also have raised three children in this community when I was on council before, the reason I got off of council is because I was trying to raise three teenage sons through their junior high and high school years, which has its own set of challenges, and now they're off to... And now they're off to college and on their own, and I've got the time again, I think, to really start to give back again to the community. So that's what I'm looking to do, and again, in the best way that I can serve this community. So you've seen my application, so you know what I've done. I've continued to stay active, and I certainly appreciate a nice, a very nice sense of community and thinking that I do have the best interests of San Carlos at heart. So having said that, you know, I understand the dilemma that this council is in, in terms of trying to fill this vacancy and trying to select the right person. So I wish you the best, just in terms of really, at the end of the day or at the end of the interview, looking at what's important and what you're looking for in terms of a colleague to join you for the next year and a half until the next election, when, you know, potentially three seats on this council will be up for reelection or will be up, and the composition of the council in 18 months could be a lot different than it is today. So, anyway, but thank you very much. If you have any other questions, obviously, feel free to let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Inga.
Thanks, Inga.
Okay, next we have Farouk Albouyeh. You can correct me on that if I didn't pronounce that correctly. Hello, sir.
Hi.
So to the city manager's credit, he reminded us that last time I didn't give the candidate opportunity to introduce themselves, so why don't you introduce yourself first, and then we'll go in with questions.
Sure. My name is Farouk Albouyeh. I'm a 24-year resident of San Carlos. I've raised three children here. My kids have gone to Heather School, Tirolinda, Central, and Carmont. And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to be here and answer your questions. Just a comment that I'm completely green. I've never been part of this process, so my answers could be very naive and uneducated. So with that, we can start.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Farouk. Ron, do you want to?
Yeah. Did you say we could ask different questions if we wanted to?
Sure.
Okay. And the reason I ask this is that I noticed on your application, you had some very different ideas than other people. You brought up some different things. So I wanted to ask you about some of these things that you mentioned you felt could be improved. You mentioned some specific infrastructure items, so I thought maybe you could elaborate that on a little bit.
By infrastructure, I don't mean the city streets only or just the sewage system. I do consider electricity and gas as part of the infrastructure. I realize that those may be responsibilities of PG&E, but driving down streets of San Carlos and looking at the attribution lines, and my background being in electrical and engineering and in power systems, it's appalling that I see all these wires going through the trees, wires hanging, and so on and so forth. So I think one of the things we're going to have to do is work with PG&E and pressure them to improve the infrastructure, the electricity infrastructure. This system was designed more than 80, 90 years ago and has not been improved much since, and is still being built with the same standards that was used back in 40s or 50s. And as our consumption patterns change, the present distribution system is going to be short of capacity with these electric cars. When you bring your electric car and you want to charge it and then you plug it in, the transformer that sits on top of the pole may not have the capacity to support this added load. So that's one of the things that I was putting in as part of things that we need to work on.
Thank you.
Very good. Mark?
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, sir. My question, I'm going to stick with the one that I've been asking everybody so far, which is, it's commonly understood that the city is in a challenging financial situation, although perhaps not quite as challenging as some might think. But there are always two components to managing that. One is the efficiency and cost side, the other is the revenue side, the income side. I'd be interested in your thoughts on what there might be in the way of opportunities to increase the revenues coming into the city.
Okay. I can't comment on the efficiencies or lack thereof for spending. As far as increasing the revenues, one of the things that we should go after is attracting more businesses and more industries to San Carlos. We're strategically situated in Silicon Valley. The city is known for good schools and good living and environment. We can easily start a campaign to bring in more businesses, large and small, to shore up our tax base. So that would be my main proposal.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the gentleman actually answered my question, I think, to some extent, and he was very emphatic about with Ron, so I'm going to sort of go off the grid a bit and just ask, this is a...
No pun intended.
No pun intended, right. Thank you. This is a wide-open question. This would be like, we had to face some of these questions, and actually, we do every year when we do our budgets. And so it's wide open, and again, we have to choose. We have to make some choices we don't like sometimes, between this and that. So I'm going to just give you a scenario here or give you a question of, there's public safety, there's park and recreation, and there's public works. So which one would be that you would rank first, second, or third, in importance, your opinion?
I'd rank public safety first, works second, and park and recreation third.
Okay. Again, it was just a wide-open question, I just figured we'd throw it out. Mr. Mayor, go.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Short, sweet.
Very good. All right. I'm going to change up my question, too, a little bit, because, well, I just am.
Because you can.
Because I can.
Because you can. That's right. It's good to be mayor.
Let's say, instead of asking, you know, to be considered for an 18-month appointment to the council, you were actually running a campaign for council. What might be your two, three, four-point platform for candidacy? You know, what kind of things might you emphasize?
Sure. We'd have improvements in infrastructure as one, priority one. Improvements in services, whether it's public works, fire, or police, as the second. And the third, coming up with ways to pay for these. It costs money, and how we can tap new sources of revenues to pay for these approved services and infrastructure. So those will be my three campaign issues.
Okay, you're standing at my front door. I just heard you say all these things. You're wanting to, you know, get on the council for these things. The question I'd probably ask you back is, tell me a little bit more about, you know, one of these is pretty straightforward, improving the infrastructure, and you've talked about that already. But when you say improvement to service, how do you mean? What do you, go into that a little bit.
We can always use more manpower and equipment. I'm not sure where we stand as far as manpower that we have or as far as equipment that our staff have. So we need to improve both. Beyond that, since I'm not that familiar with the current state of things in San Carlos, anything I say is going to be just a guess.
Okay. All right, very good. Well, you've got a few minutes. Any other questions from the council? Oh, Mark has one, okay. Mr. Olber.
Yes. By the way, is it Mr. Albouya?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Albouya. The prior two candidates who have been up here talking to us have talked about their perspective on whether they would be willing to commit not to run in November 2013, with different approaches to answering that question, but I'd be interested in your answer.
Well, I realize that one of the terms of submitting this application was a gentleman's agreement, not to run or start campaigning for the position. And I do consider myself a gentleman.
Succinctly put, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any closing statements, anything else you want us to know?
No, I'd just like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to be here and answer your questions.
Very good. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right. A little ahead of the game here?
Yes, we are.
By a few minutes. Okay, let's see if we have the next applicant here.
Yes, Karen is here.
That's right. So it's Sally Mitchell at 6:15.
Sally isn't.
And then we got Karen. You guys want to take a little bit of a break or keep rolling?
Personally, I wouldn't mind keeping rolling and taking a break after we finish the interviews, before we discuss.
Just check our, then we got Ricardo after this. Is Ricardo here? Do I see?
I think Ricardo's here, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good point. I guess we might have to take a break.
Might take a break, anyway.
We may be forced to take a break. Karen, you okay with coming up now? You're a little early.
I am.
But you're here, so, yeah, it's fine. We'll take a break, maybe after yours. Can't wait. Very good. Thanks for being here, thanks for coming in early, and why don't you go ahead and give your, a little introduction, and then we'll get into questions and so forth.
Okay. I'm Karen Clapper. I've been living in San Carlos for a little over 17 years. I currently chair the Planning Commission. My experience is in the area of management with helping organizations that are in different states of transition, either being acquired, changing leadership, a variety of different situations that I've worked with.
That's us.
Well, actually, it turns out to be most organizations, but they often don't realize it until they start talking about it. So right now, I'm focusing on working with nonprofit organizations and helping them with different problems that they have. So that's what I'm doing right now.
Okay.
Did you have any questions related to specifically what I put on the application? Wanted clarification on any of the points? Okay.
All right. So let's jump into questions with, starting, Mr. Collins.
Karen, you've been around a while. You've been on the Planning Commission. I've seen you at council meetings, I know you go to other commission meetings, and you seem pretty well tuned in to what's going on in the city. So you've had a good chance to observe how we've functioned and what's happened recently. So my question is really, given all that's happened in the last couple of years, two, three years in total, what do you think are the biggest challenges that we face right now? Or maybe over the next 18 months, probably a fairer question.
Well, the biggest challenge has to do with fiscal stability of the city and in making sure that we have some funds to invest in maintaining the structure, infrastructure, so that we're not creating any public safety problems by not maintaining it. I think also we could, one of the things I would like to see at the end of 18 months would be able to say that I've contributed to improving the communications throughout the city. That's one thing that I've seen on the Planning Commission, and as you noticed, I've been to other meetings of other commissions and other groups, because I feel there's some big assumptions that people know what's going on when people really don't. And it's a really easy thing to do, and I think we really could be more effective in the way we do things and give a increased sense of stability to our community if we found some of these, what I think are some relatively easy ways of sharing information, rather than just assuming people have the information. So those kind of two different ends of the scale, the money being A number one, that we need to make sure we're doing the best we possibly can with the constraints that we have at this time.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Olber.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Karen. I'm going to modify the question I've been asking previously a little bit, but not too much, just perhaps be a little bit more specific in recognition of your experience on the Planning Commission. To the extent that enhancing economic development or accelerating economic development is something that, for many reasons, we would want to do, or at least consider doing, what are your thoughts on how we could best go about doing that?
Well, yeah, having attended some of the EDAC meetings, I think that they have a whole list of different ideas of what they can do. They happen to be in advisory position, and I think that's one of the issues, is how do we take the A and turn it into action? Do we leverage that out through other organizations in the community? Do we work with the chamber? Do we create other business ambassador groups to make sure that we're retaining the businesses or bringing in other businesses that would be appropriate for the area? Is there some way we can possibly use the properties that are currently available at Wheeler Plaza to make sure that we are giving the, not just the impression, but the reality that we are a city that's doing well, having those vacant buildings over there, even though all of us know that there is a longer-term purpose for it and it's okay to have those vacant? Other people don't understand that. They don't see the context, and to have those buildings vacant in a very visible location sends a message to some people. So I'm concerned about what that message is and how that could have a longer-term impact. But I think looking at making sure we retain the existing businesses is a really important piece of what we do, and as we go about retaining business, we will be contacting other, whether they're realtors, people that own property, own businesses, and possibly increase the number of companies that are interested in, whether it's short-term or long-term, locating here in San Carlos.
Thank you.
Mr. Grisilli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Evening, Karen, how are you? The question that I've asked the applicants is, if you could change one thing or accomplish one thing in the 18-month term, what would that be for the city?
The one thing that, I mentioned this earlier, has to do with communication and how we share information in the city, and that's something that I know I could contribute very concretely to. But more importantly, and to give another flavor to my answer there, is the whole reason that I applied for this position is that I feel I can be very effective for the next 18 months in working with all of you to be a bridge to the next person that will be in that position. So I'm not bringing any personal agendas with me. I'm known for not bringing personal agendas, but coming in and trying to look at all the different sides, and I think that's really important in an appointed position, because all of you have been through the process of being elected, you've been on the council, you have a lot of experience and knowledge, and what I see this role as being is to make sure that the council can operate as effectively as possible in the next 18 months in as undisruptive a way or perceived as being undisruptive by the community, and that whoever gets voted in in 18 months then is able to step in to a situation that doesn't have any issues.
Great, thank you.
I don't know what it is about Bob's question that answers my question, but it sure seems to.
I'll come up with a different answer.
Okay. Ask it again and see what she says.
Yeah, I'll ask it again. Well, I'm going to give you a double whammy question, because you've heard what I've been asking, and so I want to ask you that, just, you know, given the circumstances we're in and that you're, you know, if appointed, you'd be coming on to an 18-month role without really going out there and speaking to... really going out there and speaking to the people with a campaign. So how do you see yourself fulfilling the role in that fifth seat of the council? What do you... You know, since other candidates have either emphatically stated they wouldn't run in November 2013 or that they would, they might consider it or whatever, what your position is on that? And then also because you are who you are, which is one of the members of our Planning Commission, currently the chair. We've just had two new appointments to that body. How you would see things in the house that you leave behind if you get appointed? So that's actually a three-part question.
Good question, yeah. It's not my intent to run in 18 months. That's not what I'm interested in doing. So what I'd mentioned before was I really want to make sure that 18 months from now, the council has been able to operate effectively and we don't have any significant issues that we're leaving someone else that would be coming in to join the council. So, you know, don't need any kind of relationship counseling or anything like that. The question about the... And stepping back, I have been attending a lot of meetings. I've been going to EDAC. I've been going to the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs meetings. I've been staying in touch with Transportation and Circulation Commission folks, watching the council. If I'm not there in the council chambers, I'm usually watching a video later on, not the whole thing. I pick out a few topics here or there.
You have to look at the whole thing, Karen, if you're going to look at it.
But well, I have... Well, people... When I tell people I've watched the whole thing, then they think there's something wrong with me. So I tend to not say that in public generally. But I feel that in combination with having been on the Planning Commission, I feel like I do understand a lot of the different issues that the council is dealing with. And I understand the different points of view that have been brought up in the past. And so I think it puts me in a good position to be able to leverage all of your experience and your input from the constituents here in the community. I am concerned about the Planning Commission. I think I commented, I'm concerned that there's just two new members. And how do we bring those folks on board? And not in terms of, you know, do we program their brain to think a certain way? But how does that group function? In any group, when you have, you take two out of five, that proportion of people, and it's going to create some disruption in the way we work together. And so I have a whole list of different ideas of how we're going, when we go forward, how we're going to make sure that there's clarity about what is our process? What are our procedures? What are the pieces of the parliamentarian approach that we use to make it very, very clear? Because all those things are very small pieces. And it's okay when you have one new member coming on and they're kind of sitting at the end of the row and they're going, okay, I'm just going to listen and follow along. But when you've got two people, it's really going to start to break the balance of how that organization functions. And if Wheeler Plaza and Transit Village, which are projects that have been around for a while, but now we don't have that institutional memory in the organization that we had before, we need to make sure we maybe have some extra study sessions, that we have all the materials. Everyone's got copies of all the materials. And maybe we need joint study sessions with the other commissions. I'm really concerned about where are we getting the information from and not just making assumptions that because someone offered to, you know, applied to be on the Planning Commission and they were chosen, that therefore they must already know. You guys know from the questions you were asking last week that there were some things that some of the applicants weren't aware of that were going on in the city. And that's difficult to jump in and be able to fill two seats brand-new. If there's a third position open, if you were to choose me, one of the things I would like to do is to be able to find a way within any, you know, regulatory constraints to be able to work with the Planning Commission members, again, not from a what they're thinking about, anything that's on the agenda, but their process. I think staff is so used to doing this over and over again that they, it's hard for them to step back and say, well, how can we address this a little bit differently because we have three new members on the commission? What extra do we need to do to make this really work right? And I think that will take some extra work, and I would be well-prepared to do it to make sure that the commission can contribute to the community the way we expect they will.
Very good. Thank you. Do you have any closing comments or anything you've got a few minutes?
No, it would be a pleasure to serve with all of you. And it would also be a pleasure to continue serving on the Planning Commission. So I look forward to during the next 18 months contributing to the city in one way or the other.
Very good. Thank you, Karen. Appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Karen.
All right. I think we have time to take a little break. So wait for our next candidate.
I'll go down to my car and see if I can find those questions I left.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Oh, he is? Where... Oh, okay.
He's here, but Ricardo isn't.
Ricardo's not here. Yeah.
You can take him out of order.
You could, but then we're going to be ahead of a half-hour down the road. Well, okay, whatever. Whatever. Whatever you want to do, Mr. Mayor.
I think we'll take a break if it's okay with you. Yeah. Keep things in order.
I don't know why. But I think I am, I am, I'm a Latino, I speak more than three languages. And you don't have any Latinos in the city of San Carlos. And that's what we're trying to promote, Latino power. I don't know what happened. I have checked the question that you have. Why do you want to serve as an?
Ricardo, Ricardo, excuse me. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but we've read your resume. So we just want you to make a little short, brief statement. And then we're going to ask you some questions.
Okay, well, that, about my, my resume?
No, no, no. We've read your resume. So you don't, if you had any other statements you wanted to make, opening statements separate from your resume, that would be good. Otherwise, we'll just start asking you questions.
Ask me the question.
Okay.
Okay. We're going to start down here with Mr. Collins.
Okay. Thank you, Ricardo. I'd like to just start with the fact that, as you've heard, we have had some serious budget challenges in the last few years. And I'd like to know what your thoughts on, are, on how we might address them going forward, since we've lost some RDA money, a big chunk of RDA money, as a matter of fact.
Okay. Is there any other way that we can go to the state of California, maybe the feds are going to get funded, like other places have done it? What we have to do is to make an audit of our budget, our expenses. And we maybe, we can save some money and be in a better position with the budget. I can't say that much because I'm not being exposed, not even working with you guys. So if I become city council, I will do an audit of everything in order to come up with the right approach for the budgeting.
Mr. Olber.
Are you ready with your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Ricardo. Looking beyond ways to reduce costs through audits or whatnot, what ways do you think the city could profitably pursue in order to increase the amount of revenue that it has coming into it? And how would you go about achieving those?
Okay. You want to increase revenues or call cost?
I, I would like to increase revenues. That's the gist of the question.
Okay. Number one, what we have to do is not what the residents can do for the city council or city management, it's what we can do for them in order to, to get, to get more revenues or more taxes and so on and so on. By doing that, I'm thinking about helping the residents of San Carlos, what we have very famous right now, and we, most people are exposed to our four closures and lien from the internal revenue in this area. With my knowledge that I have, I can invite several banks, Bank of America, Wells Fargo Bank, and World Comodifications. And I can lift liens because I have a cap number from the internal revenue, don't do it because it's a lot of reading. And that way, we can help the city and try to do what we can do for the businesses in the area of Laurel. Okay. Another way is the, the meeting made that we have, are they productive? Are they paying their salary? Or they are creating a problem in downtown? Because I know by my wife, she doesn't want to go and buy any clothes, women's clothes here in San Carlos, because she takes more than three hours to buy clothes. And you know how women are. And if the meeting is for one hour or two hours, she will get a ticket. So what we are, by doing, having the meeting made, we are displaying people to go to shopping centers where the parking is free. Thank you.
Mr. Griselli.
Okay, thank you. In the time that you would serve, if you're appointed to the council for the 18 months, could you basically tell us what one thing you would like, the most important thing you'd like to change, or the one thing you'd like to accomplish in that time?
Okay. You're asking what I would like to change?
What you would like to change, if you had all the power, you could do it. What one thing you'd like to change, or one thing you'd like to accomplish, or help the city accomplish in the 18 months?
Okay. I think I, I'm going to repeat myself. How can we help the residents of San Carlos to overcome the problem that is very famous that we know is happening right now? What can the, the city council can do in order to help businesses to improve? I know we did, did it years ago, and we were successful by doing the sidewalks, you know, you remember the sidewalks? We fixed and so on, we put trees and so on.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you, Ricardo. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So Ricardo, if you could speak to the thing we've asked for the applicants, that they wouldn't run in November of 2013, what your feelings are about that? And then also, how you see yourself operating in the constraints of a 18-month period? What your, how you would play out your role as a council member?
I would try to be creative and innovative in the real economic development for the city of San Carlos. That's not one point. I'm not looking to run again, so on and so on, because I'm planning to retire, even though I'm still working. We look for a better direction of the city council. I should revise the salaries of the employees. And questions I think you saw in my application is, the amount of people living in San Carlos, about 29,000. Do we need to have a city manager and assistant city manager? Those questions are popping in my head. Can we save some money in that area and we'll have the budget? Well, I said about just helping small businesses, because I, and the reason I say that, because I have the ability and the background and the knowledge, and I do a consulting, marketing, sales advertising, and so on and so on. This is what the city council have to do. They have to help the residents and the businesses in order to improve and create employment, because that's a problem, a crisis that we're having in California. That, that is the whole thing. We just can rely on the residents trying to help the city council and city management. Have to be backwards. What can we do for them? And what I said about modification, what I said about tax lien, what I said trying, trying to push some kind of ideas in order to improve the business in Laurel Street, because it's low compared to that now. Check if the meeting mates are necessary in this area. I always was against that. And how, what is our label for doing it? I'm a pro-label, even though I'm a capitalist, but I'm pro-label. I believe in that. That's what has made our capitalism system stronger. Right now, it's extremely weak because of the 1%. And another idea is that, I'm a Latino, and I, last time that we have, you people asked for the city council, you remember, about a year ago? Okay. And we, I came with the same purpose, speaking the same thing. But you pick up Bruce Lewis, and you just tell you that he had the experience because he was a city council. I saw it right now, that he did throw his hat into the ring, but he decided to retire, okay? Because he saw heavy people right now working, like we have two former mayors, and one have retired, so, so we have still another former mayor, people that have a lot of experience, maybe they have more experience than I do. But I bring innovative and creative ideas about real management and administration. Plus, remember that we have people from different places in the world, and I can speak their language, so that will be helpful too.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricardo.
Thank you, Ricardo. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, you two guys. Let's see what happens.
So that brings us to our final candidate.
Mr. Brock, can I have a glass of water?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Just help yourself. Ricardo, whatever. Help yourself over there.
Come right on up. I think you've been sitting in the back watching, so you know kind of how this is going, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, all right. So if you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and give us just a little bit of background, of course, we have your application.
My name is Steve Sanfilippo. I've lived in San Carlos for the last 22 years on my second stint. My first stint, I moved here in 1975, shortly after graduating from college. And I came to San Carlos for a very specific reason back then. It had the best-run government compared to Belmont, where I was living at the time, and it had a great school system. And those are the two reasons why I had come here originally, and then originally moved out. So I have a CPA firm in the Bay Area. We have four offices. We manage all sorts of different types of businesses and what have you. I'm the current chairman of the board of Sequoia Hospital Foundation, and have been doing that for the last two years, and likely will continue for at least another year. And I've been on the planning commission, was on the planning commission for just over three years. I have no personal relationship with anybody sitting at the table. I know Bob through my partner, Jerry Kraus. Otherwise, I'm an independent source.
Very good. All right. Well, we're going to fire away with some questions and do your best to answer. Mr. Collins.
Steve, first of all, thank you for your service on the planning commission. I was on the planning commission myself, and it's a commitment, and appreciate the time that you've given to the city.
Thank you.
And just sort of going off that point, since, you know, you've been around for long enough, and you've seen a lot of things come through the planning commission and your time on there. What do you see as the biggest issues that we're facing in the next year and a half to two years as a city?
I, I think the biggest issue from my perspective is the ability to bring development to the city effectively and efficiently. A lot of the projects we've looked at always seem to have the same issues associated with them. And I realize it comes from a point of view that isn't necessarily the gospel, but it's, it's always congested, it's congestion, it's always in paction of people in one location. Parking seems to be a constant discussion. And I, several questions were about how, how would you improve the budget situation? How would you improve revenue? Well, you have to have the capacity to do that in order to feed people through the system, so to speak, in order for that to happen. So from my perspective, development is critical, and we need to continue doing that. But we also have to take in consideration that we don't want to destroy the quality of life in the city of San Carlos.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Olber.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Steve. I'd like actually to build off of that last answer, because it relates to the question I have been asking folks. But let me tweak it a little bit, tweak the question a little bit. As, as we look at enhancing economic development, creating the capacity, as you were talking about, at the end there, you talked about the necessity of maintaining certain qualities of San Carlos. How would you go about doing that? How, how would you strike that balance?
One of the things that I learned on the planning commission, which was very difficult for me, because I operate a business, I'm not used to being in the government environment, was the amount of conflict that seemed to come up everywhere, every time you turned around, especially in the residential design area, and then, of course, at the planning level as well. Everybody's got a point of view, and that's great, because they don't have any information. They, the, the information that they get is how they hear it through the newspaper, or how they view it from their neighbors, or what have you. I think we need to communicate with people at a level that allows them to make informed decisions about the things that, the people at the city council and our professional, our professional management leaders that we have here in the city, to help them come to the table with, without as much conflict that I continually had to deal with, personally. I mean, it really bothered me to see one neighbor pitted against another neighbor. I think one of the best solutions that came out of the planning commission the last three years that I was there, was that whole form-based code system that they put into place to allow people to go online, click on their address, and this is, I don't know if it's actually been unfolded at this point, be able to see all the requirements that they had to meet in order to put in a deck, or to put in a bathroom, or whatever it happened to be, so that there's, hopefully that will reduce the amount of conflict, because we're communicating with people at a level where they can really understand what the requirements are. So for me, it's giving people the information they need to reduce the amount of conflict that we have between people here in the city. Hopefully, that, that kind of covers what you're thinking.
Mr. Griselli.
How are you?
I'm fine.
Good. My question, which you've heard before, if you're going to be on the council for 18 months, but you had the opportunity, the power, or however you want, what word you want to use, to change one thing or accomplish one thing in that time, what would it be?
It, it would be improving the level of communication.
Okay.
For example, and I, I know I put this in my application, the cell phone tower issue. Oh, my God, and the amount of time we spent on cell phone towers was unbelievable, because people don't understand that it has not much to do with the city. And poor Greg had to continually tell us, it's a federal mandate, but people don't know that. And they come there with the guns loaded, and they're blazing, and they, you know. And I understand that, and I feel bad. But as planning commissioners, we don't have any control over that. So it was.
Communication.
Communicates, yeah.
Got it.
Literally.
Literally, communication. And I, I mean, to the point where we have a click on the website that says, a white paper on, what are the cell phone, or the cell tower requirements in City San Carlos? What can and cannot we do? So if it's in your neighborhood, you'll understand why it's there.
Thank you.
So Steve, I'm going to give you the opportunity to broaden that a little bit. Well, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and do like I did with Karen. I'm going to ask a couple of questions in one shot for you. One, if you could just comment on the, you know, what we came up with as a compromise, really, which is to appoint somebody for 18 months and ask them not to run in the fall of 2013. Some candidates have said, very candidly, without even us asking, you know, they've commented on that. So if you could comment on, on that gentleman's request we've asked for. But beyond that, if you, let's say you were, instead of asking, or, you know, going through this process for an 18-month appointment, let's say you were going through a process for a four-year term, and you were going to run a campaign, and that's what you were doing, what, what do you think would be your top three, maybe four, ideas that you might run a campaign on?
To begin with, I did not renew my opportunity on the planning commission, because three years was more than I wanted to commit, just personal life issue.
Right.
The six-to-18-month appealed to me. I wasn't ready to hang up my cleats, but I just couldn't deal with the, with the three-year requirement. So this period of time works for me. I have no aspirations to go any further than that. I think at that point, I will hang up my cleats. As far as a campaign goes, I really haven't given that any thought. The city is professionally managed, and I think Jeff does a phenomenal job. I had an opportunity to have lunch with Jeff before I closed out my position with the planning commission, and I really got a lot of great information. He's doing a great job. The credit rating for the city is way up, or is up, I should say, not way up, but it's up, which is telling me that you all are doing the right thing, and he's doing a great job. You don't, don't get a big head over that.
He doesn't get a vote.
They wouldn't let me.
By the way, he doesn't get a vote, so don't even, you know.
Yep. So, so obviously, on a campaign-level basis, you, you want to make sure that the integrity of your professionally managed staff is in good shape, which we have. And, and basically, we're decision-makers about economic development and sustainability within our community as to whether or not we can do that or not, and finding sources of revenue. Now, I've heard that question asked the hour I was here. You know, we can't make, we can't wave a magic wand and all of a sudden create revenue. It just isn't going to happen. That's not being realistic. There's only two ways you can do it. You either reduce your costs, which you've done a very effective job at doing, and I think there's more room for that to be done. And the second is, is to have new sales tax and property tax revenue come into the city. That's difficult. It's not a lot of money. But the best part of it is, is if we can bring employment into the community, then what you're going to do is you're going to get the leverage benefit from that, because people will be buying. So that would be one of the two items I would, would, would run on. And the other would be my transparency issue and the level of communication. I share Karen's feelings about communication. It's, it's really, it was a very eye-opening experience being on the planning commission, realizing that we just don't have that much.
Yeah, yeah, it does. Very good. Liked your answer. Anything you want to close up with, or does any other council members have any follow-up questions?
I would really enjoy spending some time with you guys and helping, helping out the city. And that's really why I'm here, is to help out the city. When the second all-call came out, I thought, you know what? It fits into my timeframe, so I'd like to have that opportunity.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. Okay. We ready to deliberate? Do we want to take a few moments to review our notes or anything, or, how you guys sitting?
Speaking for myself, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move forward. I, I wonder, what do we envision the process itself looking like, these next steps here?
Well, I thought one thing we might do is just try and take a, you know, a straw poll, see who are, who each of us feel are perhaps our top three candidates that we're interested in. From there, we could, we could have some discussion, and unless it, from that polling, that straw poll, it just becomes blatantly obvious. But from there, we can have some discussion. And then from there, after we've done that, I'd be looking for some motions and putting some people up for consideration and testing the waters that way. Does that sound fine?
Yes. Just one question, Mr. Mayor. Do you just want us, at least for this first go-around, to just give you our names? Do you want us to give rationale, why we like them, et cetera? Or do you, is it sort of a, you know, just the names, sir-type of approach?
Well, why don't we discuss that for just a moment?
Okay.
It's, I think it's a good question. It bears some discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would suggest that perhaps we just, we, we maybe give our top candidate, and then, as Mr. Collins said, perhaps explain why we think he or she is our top candidate. And as you mentioned, if three of us have an individual as top candidate, you, you know, this may go along. And if we don't, then, I guess we'd move to, to other folks. I have a list of three people here, but, you know, I don't know. That's just a suggestion, whatever. If the other members of the council think that's a good idea or not, I don't know. Maybe they don't. So that's fine.
Okay. So you're, what you're suggesting, Bob, if I can summarize, is that we, we give our top three and perhaps a little... our top three and perhaps a little word or two about why they are our top three?
Either that or just one to start, but whatever way you want to work it, it's fine with me. I'm prepared any way you want it.
All right. Mr. Olbert.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. I guess I would be okay with that. I have to admit, I kind of like the idea, whether we provide color commentary or not, I kind of like the idea of teeing up three names, rather than just one.
That's fine.
And then, you know, leave it up to individuals to describe why. If I may, I was also just going to say, just as a, as a closing comment to all of the interviews and maybe in transition here, and I suspect my colleagues would probably want to say the same thing. I very much appreciate everybody who put their hat in the ring, coming out here and sitting up here. We don't necessarily have a lot of audience members here, other than the candidates themselves, but hopefully we have people watching us on TV. And it probably looks really easy to do that, go up there and sit there and answer some questions, but everybody who's ever done that knows it's not. You're really putting yourself on the line to do that, and it takes something to do that, and I thank everybody who had the gumption, I guess is the word I'll use, to do that.
I agree. I think it, you're right. I don't know how this is coming out on television, what it looks like, but just to go through the process, and, you know, as soon as we walked in the room, we thought, this is a little uncomfortable, the setup, but it's necessary in order to film it. But the candidate sitting there at, you know, gunshot with all of us, it's not an easy thing to do. So, I appreciate everybody who did put in the effort and came out tonight. So I think what I heard then is that we'll give, we'll run through and give our top three candidates. If you want to add a little color to that, I think that's fair game, and we'll see where we, where we stand from that point. Who wants to start? You want to go same order as questions? Can you do that? Okay. Mr. Collins?
Sure. Well, my top three, it's really number one, number two, and number two-A, the way I've been thinking. My number one is actually Karen Clapper. My number two is Inga Doherty, and two-A would be Steve Sanfilippo. And just to give a little depth to my feelings, you know, I've, I just met Karen last summer when I was running for council, and I really didn't know much about her, but over the last several months, I've really seen a depth of commitment to the city, a seriousness, a maturity, an understanding of the issues. I know, based on some of her decisions on the planning commission, that she didn't agree with, with me, or I didn't agree with her, since my decisions came after hers. But I think that, that adds to a level of respect that I have for the way that she's handled herself. I just think she would make an outstanding contribution to the council. I'd almost like to see her long-term, but, you know, we all understand the constraints there. I just think she's, she's head and shoulders, really one of the most superior people I've seen interview for the council. My number two is, and it's actually, and I admit, this is a qualified number two, Inga. I've known Inga a long time. I think she's served the city extremely well. I would love to see her back on the council. And I happen to know that she's very ambivalent about this. She's the type of person that will do whatever the city wants, you know, and that's what you want. You want a lifetime resident who's, who has been dedicated to the city, who's been on the council. She understands the issues. She's, you know, she's raised children, she's been an entrepreneur, she's had a lot of different jobs, and she understands the city in a way that a lot of people just could not. So she's sort of my, as I say, my two-A. My two-B, Mr. Sanfilippo, I, I don't know him at all, but I was very impressed with his, again, I'm impressed with his service on the planning commission, and I think that, you know, he gets the issues. I know he has a business in town, I've driven by it, so, and I know that he has a long-term commitment to the city as well. So, those are my three.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Olbert.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My three in order are Karen, Steve Sanfilippo, and John Hoffman. And there's a lot of reasons for the three choices that I made, but I'm just going to try and be succinct here. There was a statement that I wrote, I probably wrote it down slightly wrong, that I heard Karen make, which I just absolutely loved, which was something to the effect of turning advisory into action. And as somebody who believes that one of the things we need to think about going forward and work on going forward is how to do more and study less, I really liked that idea. I also think that, that she very much impressed me with, with her answers to the questions and with her approach to solving things. Mr. Sanfilippo, I actually had not met before tonight, and I will say that, Mr. Sanfilippo, I don't necessarily agree with your, completely with the thesis that you were presenting about all conflict being the result of a lack of information, but I thought you were very articulate and very direct in how you expressed that. In fact, I, whatever happens here tonight, I would love to get together and talk about that. But that very much impressed me. I like that sort of clear, driving focus. And lastly, but not leastly, Mr. Hoffman, you know, has quite a bit of experience to bring, to bring to bear on this situation. Again, I don't necessarily share the same perspective about the significance of some of the fiscal issues, but I can't argue with the fact that the fiscal things are not very important, and he clearly has quite a bit of track record with the city to be able to bring to bear on that. So those were my three.
Very good. Mr. Grisilli.
I sort of, as Ron indicated, he says one, and then two-A and two-B, I sort of have one, one-A and one-B, because I think the three people that I came up with. But the first person I had was Inga Teagle Doherty, second was Karen Clapper, and third was Steve Sanfilippo. The reason I put Ms. Teagle Doherty first is because, basically, I appreciated the comments that she made relative to regionalization and working with labor, and those comments that I think in the future, we are going to have to, well, certainly the regionalization part, it's just, it's a, it's a no-brainer type situation that we're going to have to face. She has the experience in economic development with the HIA, and her comments relative to the east side, I think, especially the HIA is probably some untapped area over there for economic development. Both she and Karen would bring diversity to our council. I think that would be welcomed by ourselves, as well as the community. She could hit the ground, running certainly for an 18-month term, and how I approached it is, I just looked at it for 18 months. Whether a person is going to run or not going to run, I just looked at, I pretended that in November, that's it, and I'd like to have someone on here that's going to be very effective for 18 months, and I think she'd be the best. But Karen is very, very capable. I enjoyed her comments about the communication and collegiality that she, she made. Also, she has the experience on the planning commission, as does Inga. I thought that she also could, could bring some, some positives to our group. Mr. Sanfilippo, who I, I've met and actually gotten to know over the last couple of years, as he indicated, I think he certainly does bring an independent streak, knowing Steve. He calls them as he sees them, and he has no axe to grind and no agenda in any way, shape, or form, nor do the other two ladies, I must say. But Steve, as he said, this is probably his last hurrah, and again, for the 18 months, I think he'd be also good for us, again, with the communication comments and, and some other items that he brought up. So those are my three, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. One of the things I wanted to say before talking about the candidates, just another comment about this process, anytime we do any of these, whether it's this one, or things for planning commission, or the other commissions, it's always interesting that, things that people have to say, and their perspectives on the city, the problems they perceive that we have, the solutions to those problems, and so forth. I think that's why, you know, as candidates, you probably noticed us writing things down, and it, at least on my part, it's not just so I can remember what you said, relative to you and your candidacy, but relative to us as a city, and things we may want to go talk to the city manager about at a later date, things that need to be solved and so forth. And especially being that two candidates did talk about the communication issue, I think, we got that message loud and clear, so we'll be doing something about that, I think. Not that we haven't ever tried to address it, it's, we have done things, that's why the city manager's newsletter that we're trying out and so forth, but I think your comments gave us a different perspective on it. So, with that said, my number-one pick is Karen. I did come into this with a little bit of fear and trepidation that, that actually might be the case, that it would be my top candidate, because, that she would be my top candidate, because I do see her as being a key person on the planning commission, and we talked about that, the two new people and so forth, but she came prepared with an answer to how we might solve that, and I think that's probably a doable plan. Steve was, was my second pick, and again, I like the comments he made, some of them parallel to what Karen had talked about, and I think as somebody else said, he comes across as somebody is, that doesn't have an axe to grind, doesn't necessarily have a, any kind of agenda in mind. I really liked your comment about your, you're not quite ready to hang up the spikes, so, the sports analogy, you can always get me with that. And the, my, my third person really is a distant third, because I like these other two so much. So I guess in that regard, I'm kind of a, like Mr. Grisilli, a one-A and a one-B, or however you want to look at that. But John would be my, my third person. And the only thing I'll say about that with John as my, my third, I think he's well-spoken, but I have a little bit of concern about reaching into the past, because I think what we're trying to do here is look to the future, and having somebody new that's not been on the council before, I actually see as that being an advantage, as opposed to reaching back to someone who's been on the council before and remembers things of the past and so forth. I think, you know, if, maybe if we were sitting here with three brand-new council members and only one that had some history, that might be an issue the other way around, but I think we're pretty well-balanced in that regard right now, with myself being on the council for over 10 years. Bob, you've been on for, you're in your second term, right?
Right, six, over six, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we've got some, some good balance in that regard. So, so that's where we are. That means we've got Karen down, three of us have Karen down as a first, and one is a, as a strong second, I guess I would say, with Mr. Grisilli. And then, in terms of number two, we've got Steve down twice, Inga and Karen, and then Steve's also down as third twice, and John's down as third twice. So that's where we are. Discussion, or if somebody wants to make a motion, we can do that.
Mr. Mayor, I was, I'll put it out there, I was going to make a motion that the council approve appointing Karen Clapper to serve out the remainder of Mr. Klein's seat. Mr. Rubens, is that a reasonably accurate way of describing that?
That is accurate.
Thank you.
And I would second that.
All right, any discussion? Any further discussion? Christine, you're over there, but do you want to do a roll call?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Congratulations to Karen. Excuse me? I suppose we're adjourned unless Karen wants to come give some other closing comments, but, no, she says no, okay. Thank you very much, everybody.
Your first, Karen.